Thank you. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. All rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, now we can move on to roll call.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tem Wall asked to be excused.
Move to excuse Mayor Pro Tem Wall.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? He has been excused. So next is our, oh, I'm in the wrong. I'm in next week's agenda.
Do that, too?
Let's get today's agenda up. Right here. All right. So do we have any late changes to the agenda?
We do not, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? Do we have any public comments? Anyone signed up?
No one signed up in person, no one preregistered online, and we don't have any written comments.
All right, thank you. Okay, so next is the consent calendar. Who would like to do that? Would you?
Mayor, I move that we approve this week's consent calendar.
A and B?
A and B. Items A and B: payment of claims and meeting minutes.
I hear a second.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to vote on the consent calendar, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. And next is a proclamation for the Public Works Week, and we're going to have our council member, Steve Woodard, read a proclamation, and our Public Works Supervisor for Water and Sewer, Sean Yurt, will be accepting it. You can go up there, too.
Firstly, let me say thank you, Mayor, for this honor. Secondly, let me say I know you're not, especially as a council member, ever supposed to say you have a favorite department, but let me just say, I resonate so closely to this department for a lot of reasons, mostly because of what they have to go through, which is, no one thinks about them per se until something goes wrong, right? And all the great stuff they do, right? We expect of it, but it isn't a given. Have to be so creative, have to be industrious, have to be forward-thinking in ways that we don't, because most of that work is underground, above-ground, somehow interrelated, and just, again, things that most of us take for granted. So thank you all to your teams. You deserve more than a Public Works Week. It should be a Public Works decade. I think you had a year once in there, so congrats on that one. But nonetheless, thank you all, and I'm sure the council agrees with me, and now I'll get to the proclamation. So this was impromptu, in the sense of the mayor to say, "Come up and read this," but I should have seen this coming. All righty, so, City of Mount Lake Terrace proclamation, National Public Works Week. Whereas, public work service provided in our community includes maintenance of our streets, sidewalks, potable water, sewer and storm systems, equipment and vehicle fleet, and capital planning for the needs of our residents, which was the abridged version, and whereas the equality and effectiveness of these services are dependent on the commitment, effort, and skill of public work employees and elected officials, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, children in Mount Lake Terrace to gain knowledge and understanding of the importance of public works programs in our city, and whereas the year 2024 marks 64th National Public Works Week, awesome, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, when we pay tribute to our public work professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions, let me repeat that, the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing qualities of life for all, and now therefore, our mayor, Kyoko Matsumoto Wright, mayor of the City of Mount Lake Terrace, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through May 25th as National Public Works Week, and encourage our community to join us in celebrating the great contributions of our public work employees to our city. Signed by our mayor, the 16th day of May 2024, at the City of Mount Lake Terrace, State of Washington, in the witness whereof, and the seal of signatures of this fine city are fixed. Thank you, brother. Thank you, council. Thank you. From all of us, or, I would say, all of us? Outstanding, you and your team. Thank you, sir.
I'm short, so I just.
Between the towers.
Sorry.
Do not click it. Ready? Now click it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so next is the presentation of Information Technology Strategic Plan with Soft Resources with our city manager, Jeff Knighton.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, I wanted to introduce our IT strategic planning consultants, and they're going to give you a presentation on something that they've been working on and city staff has been working on for quite a while now, but I also wanted to update you on a couple of the current projects that we've implemented already that I think have made communications easier, and some of the things that are in progress. And this is not, by any means, all of the things that our IT department is working on, but just to give you a kind of an overview of all the things that have been happening. So we've completed the Office 365 implementation and the Invoice Cloud implementation for our new billing system. We have Axon Bodycams, which I think is something council was very interested in, and several other systems, including enhanced Wi-Fi connectivity for employee access, and migrating several of our current systems to the cloud. All of these things are in the IT strategic plan that you'll hear a little bit more about this evening. In progress, we have Central Square, that is the permit system, the online permitting system, along with Laserfish, which you've heard quite a bit about, and other cloud migrations. So we're not keeping all the stuff here on premise. It is secure in the cloud format. So with that, I'll turn over the presentation to our consultants and let you know what we're going to be working on.
Thank you very much. Is that better? So appreciate your time tonight. I'm Ron Luce, Spencer Aronson from Soft Resources. We're here to talk about a five-year IT strategic plan that we built for the city. This is kind of the Cliff Notes version of the, we have a 46-page report with exhibits, and so this is giving you the very quick overview of that. So a little bit just about us, so you can understand where we're coming from. We're a software selection consultancy based in Kirkland. We've been around, my gosh, almost 30 years now. Used to be part of KPMG. We spun off because we wanted to be completely vendor-independent, so we do not sell software. We only work for our clients and try to find the best solutions for our customers and clients. We do software selections, we do system assessments, and IT planning, like we were helping the city with.
I'd like to also add, we do work with a lot of cities in the area, Redmond, Monroe, Kirkland, we're pretty much every city you can think of we've worked with, in various software evaluations or selection processes.
So in order to build our IT plan, we wanted to make sure we could hear what the stakeholders at the city had to say. So we created interactive stakeholder workshops, where actually, we came out on site, this started back in September of last year, and we spoke to not only like senior leadership and managers, but subject matter experts and users. I think we talked to 27 different people from different departments throughout the city. We wanted to talk about how they were using technology today, what their processes were like, how things worked, what didn't work, how the organization was structured. We wanted to get a feel for how the city used technology, and not only as they're using it today, but how the employees thought that they'd like to see it in the future. So from that, we also want to do some follow-up interviews remotely after those onsite workshops. We did, we created a staff survey, which we're going to talk about shortly. So with that, we developed, in conjunction with the IT team here at the city, a five-year IT strategic plan that includes a proposed timeline and high-level budget estimates. So quickly, just wanted to mention the staff survey. Even though we had interviewed the 27 different stakeholders from different departments, we wanted to try to get another way of reaching out to the people at the city. So we had a, we did an electronic survey. We wound up with 44 results, which is actually pretty good.
Respondents.
Respondents, sorry. Thank you very much. You know, and some of the high-level findings are that the city, the employees found the IT resources are good, but it's limited. It's kind of hard to get a hold of folks. Sometime in IT, they're so busy. They really felt that there's a need to modernize technology at the city. There was definitely some feedback about the balance between security and connectivity. It was kind of hard to log in sometimes, you feel like you had to jump through a bunch of hoops to get in. So balancing the needs for security, which is real, that's a big deal. So we heard a lot about that, updating business software solutions, or a lot of folks who wanted to do that, and then a favorite, you know, Spencer said, "We work with a lot of cities," so we see this quite a bit, more user training. So yeah, it went well. You can see, again, there's a lot more information in the report, but over half the respondents were very satisfied with their current IT support. So that five-year IT strategic plan, like I said, it was about 46-page report. This is a road, this is a roadmap, a roadmap that the city could follow to help prioritize the deployment and use of information technology. There's a lot to do. There's so many competing needs out there, and so we tried to kind of help team focus. And we came up with 77 recommendations, 20 different project initiatives that were ranked, budgeted, and we came up with a timeline. So we break that out into a couple different, a couple different areas in the report. There's the organizational assessment, you know, how the IT team is organized now, how the support's taking place. The technology infrastructure itself, we took a look at that. We took a look at the business systems, the software, project initiatives, and then we came up with the five-year plan. So, oops. So business systems map. And there's some small fonts and some of the things we're going to show you, and I apologize for that. Like I said, you can, you can look at that report, and if you don't have it, I'm sure Gary, the city manager, could help you get it. The city is supporting 88 different applications. It's a lot. It's not unusual, by the way. It's not unusual. And the images here, these are the main systems. You know, you see in the larger fonts, Laserfish, Civic Plus, Tyler, and, you know, Microsoft Office, but there are, there are a lot of things going on, and it really is, it's a fairly heavy lift to support this.
And a lot of spreadsheets as well, sales spreadsheets, right? So moving office systems, using sales spreadsheets to get what they need out of their systems.
So key initiatives, the technology organization. One of the things we noticed is that departments, to a certain extent, were just running, going out, and this is just a historical fact, that they're running out and buying their software themselves and weren't always working with IT. It would kind of come, "Oh, hey, whoa, we got, we have this, now we have to support it." And so in order to kind of stretch, get more bang for your buck, I think that, we think that the IT governance should be changed a little bit, so the IT team should have knowledge of all IT projects going on, and make sure that they can, that helps with change management, helps with prioritization, it helps with how the different functional footprints fit together, and so we felt that that was important. The IT organization, we felt that you needed an additional IT system, support specialist, that's not what you call them, though. Systems analysts, which I believe you've already hired. I think we also recommended a part-time GIS support specialist to help your current GIS person. GIS is really graphical information systems.
Geographical information.
Geographical information systems, like ESRI. It's gaining in popularity. It originated a lot, in a lot of cities and like public works, but more and more different teams are using it. It really is, it's really good stuff.
So just, just to clarify, geographic information systems, the mapping, right? And so you'd be able to have the different layers of the map, so you can see what's going on in the city?
Another thing that we recommend is moving systems to the cloud whenever possible and feasible. Some of this is just going to take place no matter what, because the market is simply moving to the cloud, so it's harder and harder to buy software that you actually can install in your own data center or IDF or MDF rooms here. The cloud also will free up some IT resources, because it's easy, you don't have to report to, you don't have to support the nuts and bolts as much with the cloud solutions. You're outsourcing that to like Microsoft Azure or Amazon, Amazon Web Services, things like that. So moving to the cloud is a good thing. The security is much, much better than it was even six or seven years ago, so it's a solid way to, again, take some of the support burden off your IT team. Cloud-first policy for new software systems, if at all possible, if it's offered in a cloud solution, go for the cloud. Internet redundancy, making sure, because you're moving to the cloud, that means that your, their software's not hosted here onsite, it's somewhere in a data center, so you really need to make sure your internet, you have extra connectivity, so find, that redundancy's a big deal. Something else I wanted to bring up here is I think that smaller cities, it's hard, because you have a similar functional footprint to someone like Bellevue or Kirkland, but they, they're much larger and have bigger budgets and more folks, and so with a smaller city, you have the challenges of supporting a similar functional footprint with way fewer people, and so that moving to the cloud is definitely going to help. Technology infrastructure. So enhanced Wi-Fi coverage, I believe the city manager already addressed that, but this was very popular in our discussions with, with city employees, that they really, really wanted Wi-Fi to work a little bit better, a little faster, make it easier to get, to get into. Again, there's that security login balance. You need to make sure you're respecting security protocols, but maybe there's a way we can make it a little simpler. Replacing desktops with laptops. You know, hybrid, facilitating hybrid work, hybrid work's not going anywhere, it's going to be around, and so if you're going to replace a desktop, you might as well replace it with a laptop. The cost differential is not that great, and it gives you a lot more flexibility. Again, the use of graphical information, geographic information systems like ESRI, that's, you know, we recommended that you added a half-person to help support that system, and also roll that up underneath the IT team as well. That's a big deal. Completing the implementation of Office 365, I think you're a lot, you're pretty well along the way there, but that's basically using the Microsoft Office that you know and love, like Excel and Word, and moving that off to the cloud. And that's just the direction of Microsoft, but again, it's one less thing you have to worry about being onsite. Laserfish, we've talked about, that's a document management solution. That's going to be moved to the cloud, and also implement document scanning. That's one of those projects that you just need to kind of chip, keep chipping away at, it's going to take a while.
Essentially moving some of the documents, the paper documents that you have, and moving them to electronic format, and that takes a lot of effort and time and a strategy, and so moving forward with that, that's a recommendation for you.
AI capabilities, we hear a lot about this. You see, oops, you see AI in the, in the news all the time, "Oh, wow, AI, it's really cool." AI is really in its infancy, especially when you're talking about software solutions, municipal software solutions. It's not quite there yet, but it's going to be. So as the, continue, continue to evaluate those AI capabilities as they become available, because there's going to be some really great stuff coming, but we're not there.
Artificial intelligence, right? AI is artificial intelligence.
And then business systems, a couple of things that, the high-level things that we think need to be accomplished, updating that Tyler financial software to the cloud. That's your key ERP system that the city uses. Moving it to the cloud is the way to go, and actually Tyler's really pushing everybody to the cloud anyways, so that takes care of itself, but that's going to help. Implementation of time and attendance software. Implementation of Tyler Content Manager, which is a different flavor of basically your document management solution, but that's geared towards your ERP, that backs up your ERP.
ERP is Enterprise Resource Planning or your financial system, so when we say ERP, it's basically your financial system.
And complete the Central Square implementation, so that's your permitting solution, code enforcement inspections, community development. And then enterprise asset management, that's basically managing all of your physical assets. You think about like public works, like hydrants and valves and all kinds of recreation and parks, anything that they're supporting, and anything you're maintaining, that tracks all the costs and how to maintain that, and that's something that you, you need a new system, so that's fairly high on the list. Police, completing the implementation of Axon Bodycams and the Dashboard cams.
Moving later on to Dashboard cams, when, when your current contract ends up, stops, or your current contract with the other vendor is complete, then move to Axon. So you have a unified system moving forward for police?
IT plan and criticality. So what, what we're doing here is we're trying to associate a, how critical is it, is this, is this item, is this project and initiative? We're just trying to put a framework around it. What should we do first, right? What's the most important? And so here's just a snapshot of our, what we thought was really important as far as bang for your buck, impact, and how critical it was, and this is a way to rank and what you're going to do, and understand what you're going to do first. So, you know, implementing the IT governance changes, that's not a huge deal, it's not a big cost, if at all, any cost associated with that. Migrating systems to the cloud, Tyler Munis, updating Tyler Munis, those are the top of the list. And then number four, implementing and selecting and implementing that enterprise asset management solution, we just talked about that. So here you can see, this is the.
Kind of prioritization, right? Kind of a heat map prioritization.
Yep. And again, tiny fonts. This is our project IT plan timeline. There's a lot of stuff on here to get done, and so we tried to, here's one way, here's what we would recommend you do it, and here's, we think, the time it's going to take each one of these projects, and we kind of tried to space them out from a change management perspective, also from a cost perspective, because you can't do all this at once, and your IT team has finite resources. But this was, again, the IT plan.
So you can see, it matches the heat map of prioritization, so you can see when each project should be done, and then it kind of maps it out over the five years of the strategic
And here's the project initiatives with the budget estimates. Again, it's really tiny, you can take a look at it, the details on it, but we, hopefully you can see the bottom line, my guess is this is one thing, this is near and dear to your hearts, is the estimated total cost for, by year, for all of these. It basically ranges from $445,000 to about, it looks like $678,000 on the high end annually for the next five years, starting in this year. So that's what it would cost to do all these initiatives. Kind of went through that really fast, and then, how do you take a 46-page report and shove it into 10 or 12 minutes? But anyways, hopefully that helps you to understand a little bit.
I think you, the bottom line is, you have a good IT department that's working real hard, working real hard. Let's make sure that they have the tools they need, the people they need, and the tools they need to support the organization, and I think, you know, there's some initiatives that we can really improve the use of technology here at the city, and so let's move forward in a good, expeditious manner, but at a measured manner, so we can afford things and get them into the right timeframes and getting these things in. We're excited about it. There's a lot of opportunities for you here at the City of Mount Lake Terrace.
Okay, well, I guess we can open it up for questions. Who's first? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you. What I'd like to have you do, and this is going to be a tough call for you, is, because we have, our public is listening, in a nutshell, what is it you're doing for the city?
What I think we're trying to do is, our task in our engagement was to, was to come in and identify, what are the highest, what are, what's the most important thing to do, and what do we do first, when it comes to technology? So that, that's in a nutshell what we did, and so we asked, we asked, hopefully representatives, 27 different folks from different departments, and here is what we would do. You're asking us, you're paying us as professional consultants, what would you do if you were in our shoes? This is what we would do, this is how we would do it, and the order we would do it in. It's not the only way you could do it, and again, this is a snapshot in time, this was done, the report was finished at the end of last year, so we're about five or six months past that, so we've moved on a little bit, but.
So our deliverable was the strategic plan, to say, okay, this is the strategic plan for you to do over the next five years, and that was our deliverable for this project.
Great, thank you. I, I just wanted to ask that, because when I'm at QFC over here, and I'm in the cheese department, sometimes they ask me these questions, and I wanted to just kind of, you know, just in a nutshell what it all is. Thank you.
Well, you have good cheese.
Councilmember Ryan, I think I would, yeah. I think I would just add that we're trying to make our work more efficient and make use of technology to, to make our operations more efficient, so that our citizens and our residents are getting the best bang for their buck.
Hey, Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you both for presenting today, and thank you to our IT team for all their work, excited about this, and, you know, I think technology is incredibly important to our city manager's comment. I did have a couple of questions. So for the costs, are those all added costs, or are some of those already baked into, I guess, efforts that were already underway?
That's a good question. So these are additional costs, right? Because they are the new initiatives that we're, that we are moving forward with, and so, and also the other thing to notice, too, about the, when you're going to the cloud, there's a little bit of a different cost structure than there has traditionally been. Traditionally, you've gotten a piece of software, you pay for the software, and you go on maintenance, and you kind of pay maintenance every year, and, and sometimes you go off maintenance, because, you do. But with the cloud, it's more of a subscription. So from a budgeting perspective, you're really looking at it, saying, okay, once we, once we buy the software, or buy the software subscription for the cloud, then we're, every year we pay that, that amount. So that's something to keep in mind as we look at, from a budgeting perspective, is that you're buying a subscription with cloud software now.
Thank you. So I guess follow-up question on that, because we're going through a similar process at my employer, and so we are, you know, kind of, we have made the decision to absorb those kind of monthly subscription costs, and there's also been a significant cost savings as we look at retiring physical servers, for instance, that are incredibly expensive to buy and to maintain, and so I guess I'm curious, so there's added costs here, but I'm curious if there is some sort of refle, is there any cost savings that you anticipate, and like, is there somewhere that we can better understand what that might look like?
Yeah, so, so cost savings come, you're right. So you come in a couple of different ways. Number one, you're not going to need the added infrastructure servers and things like that, so over time, as you move more and more to the cloud, and you'll have less and less of a need for your onsite infrastructure, technology infrastructure. Now, other things such as Wi-Fi and internet connectivity are critical, so that's one cost savings. The other cost savings is that your IT department can focus more on, you know, working with that software vendors, they don't need to do a lot of the backend, you know, server maintenance and things like that. And so essentially what you're doing is you're outsourcing your, your software costs to the software vendor and letting them worry about upgrades, letting them worry about security, letting them, but there's still IT department requirements to maintain, to work with the, with the software vendor, and to maintain integrations and things like that. So there's still plenty for them to do, but it kind of changes their work from being, you know, worrying about onsite servers to working with integrations and other issues.
Being vendor managers, right? So the jobs change a little bit over time. You're outsourcing your nuts and bolts, basically.
Yeah. Is that part of the plan as well, kind of training and, you know, support for our staff to transition from what our current IT infrastructure looks like to our new IT infrastructure?
That was not specifically part of our plan, and it's something that would happen very gradually, because you're, it's going to take quite some time before you can get out from underneath a lot of the, the legacy systems that are on premise.
Got it. Fair enough. Just, I guess, two other quick questions. So I'm just curious, just really, I think mostly curiosity, about the GIS technician being placed in IT. I've worked at organizations that have GIS technicians, and so like, I'm familiar with the role, but I guess it's interesting, I don't know, is that a normal kind of structure in municipal government to have that as part of the IT team?
Yeah, I, yeah. Probably 60, 70% of our business is dealing with municipalities, so we see this all day long. So I would say that it started out in public works, because they're the ones, especially when you're dealing with horizontal assets, like pipes, pipelines, things like that, to manage, the GIS is super handy for that. But over time. But over time, like we talked about earlier, so many different teams start using it. Parks and Recreation, facilities, you name it. It just gets really popular and then it becomes citizen-facing.
Community development, right?
Yeah. And then your asset management, your folks that are out there taking care of your infrastructure. So it becomes more and more important. It's not just a public works-focused solution anymore. And so, yeah, we see, sometimes it stays in public works, but usually over time, we see more and more moving towards underneath IT because it's a shared resource. It's not just public works.
Very interesting. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate the time and the presentation.
All right, anyone else? Councilmember Salmor?
Ron and Spencer, thank you very much for your report. I'm going to hit Gary a little bit here. And hi, Gary, and thank you for all your hard work. What is our current budget that we're spending right now on IT, like in 2022? Or 2023, I'm sorry.
About 5:30?
5:30?
Yeah.
It's just, I know we're going to have another item on the agenda to talk about budget. And when I see numbers like this, you know, sometimes it's just overwhelming on what IT costs. And my biggest concern is always keeping the system safe and out of harm's way and not having to pay extra costs there. So it sounds like we've been doing a lot on that and working to do that. One of the things is understanding if our budget can even handle, you know, hiring new people. But I know you've prioritized different things in here. And one of the things that you brought up that I'm just curious about is efficiency of our staff. And one of the things we use is JIRA. And I know, and we're phasing it out. But there's all these other systems where you take all... And not that I always like using those things, but we just had a big turnover in our staff. And we're always looking at proficiency in training one person to the next. And are we looking at things like that? Where we put the job information into a technology that it can then pass on to somebody else? And we can see and get more proficient on who's doing what and when and what helps needed within those tools?
We haven't looked at that yet.
And then the other thing I was going to ask about is... Oh, shoot. Oh, the phone system going to a cloud. And just my, one of my biggest pet peeves is making things non-personable and making everything... And we're just taking classes right now at work on AI and understanding AI. And I know that's one aspect. But when I see the phone system going into the cloud, I'm wondering if it's all going to be automated and you're not going to talk to a real person anymore. And that's one of the things that I'm finding as I'm getting older, that it seems like we're going less and less away from the personal touch and being so dependent on IT to do everything. Is that one of the things that this phone system would do?
I can dig that. So the phone system moving to the cloud is essentially the infrastructure of the phone system. Right now, you have an on-premises system that the telephone, you pick up the telephone, right? It's essentially doing the same thing. You still have a phone system. It's just, it's on the cloud. So the voicemails would be sitting on the cloud, you know, and things like that. It's still basically the same as what it currently is as far as managing that.
I'm glad you brought... Gary, didn't a few years ago, we had a big phone issue? Or something happened to our phone system? Maybe when we moved into the city or something? There was something that happened with our phones? But I guess it's neither here or there. But so out of these costs here, I know you did analysis on it. And I'm not sure what our budget can handle, because it sounds like it might be $100,000 more in 2024 and then goes down in 2025. And then I expect that it will probably keep on going up as technology changes. But have we looked at what we can actually afford in our budget?
So, no. And, but we will before we purchase these systems. Each, this is a recommendation. So what will come to you in the budget is a separate topic than what we're talking about tonight. These are just high-level estimates. And we would have to prioritize what we want to do based on all the other needs of the city during the budget process. So this isn't an ask from council tonight to appropriate these dollars. It's just a making sure that you're aware of what these costs might be when we bring you these initiatives.
So then from that, looking at page 12, we're looking at all these initiatives. And we probably know that we won't get them all based on how our budget's doing in the future. But would we still look at the impacts and the criticality of the implementation of the IT governance? It looks like that's the highest priority of them all. And I'm trying to see where that fits in on page 12, because it says no cost. And so I'm happy about that one. But going down to migrating to the cloud and, you know, looking at the top priorities and where they fall in the lineup of the cost.
So those two, particularly implementing IT governance and migrating city systems to the cloud are essentially strategies, strategy recommendations rather than specific applications. And so the strategy to have IT have better governance is a strategy. And then also the strategy to migrate city systems to the cloud is kind of a strategy that the city would move forward. Then we go down into initiatives that would require us to potentially spend money. And those are the initiatives that follow that.
I was going to ask about number three, but I'll wait. I'm sure that's very, a little more technical than I'm used to. But thank you very much.
All right, anyone else? Councilmember Woodard?
I want to first say, I think I've never seen us go to the second page before on the agenda. But to your presentation, thank you for the work you're doing. That said, the main one, and thank you for pointing out, the main one doesn't cost, which sounds great. But it's also the one that's going to hit human nature right in the gut. Because if I understood correctly, we are in a... I'm sure they consult with someone before they purchase software or hardware or what have you. But it's not communicated centrally, which can lead to, if I go back to that grid that I was going to jokingly refer to as a memory game, who's got what? You have, I noticed several icons in different columns, which begs the question, are they on the same contract? Did they pay the same price? Did they, could they have teamed up? I mean, there's all kind of cost saves there, I presume, that are taking place, which is why you would want centralized IT, anything, purchase, replacement, all that good stuff. However, going back to this human nature punching the gut aspect, going from I get to choose what I want, there's an inherent... Well, now there's someone who can tell me I can't have that. And again, I recognize somebody was there, city manager. But I just want to kind of recognize that even though it doesn't cost anything, it's the highest priority. I think it's the biggest change. And I would just be conscientious of that, if you aren't already, and be curious, not tonight, but curious about how that part will be addressed. Because in the spirit of, I appreciate IT, you don't know how my department runs. So when I say I need something, I shouldn't have to convince you... And I'm not saying that's you, I'm just saying fields. And I'm using my higher ed model, so there's some transference going on here. Acknowledge that. But it's that sticking point. But that said, I support this idea of being centralized, if nothing else, to avoid people not realizing, oh, I was just about to do that. Or if you had said something, the one that I have had that feature, man, then we could have doubled up our money. I mean, there's so many synergies, I think is the word we still use, that can take place. So I applaud you for prioritizing that. But again, also want to recognize that's the one where, ooh, most of the change is going to come play, come through. So putting that out there. But thank you for the work you've done. And I wish us well as we figure out how to implement. I'd love to do all of it. But the reality is, again, we're going to have competing costs and context. Hopefully not another, something we have to deal with outside of the normal day-to-day. So appreciate what's here.
Okay. I don't see any other hands coming up. So this is just a presentation, so we're not doing anything else tonight with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council. Appreciate it.
Okay, so next, we're going to be, it's a review, public hearing and vote on ordinance for 2023 budget carryovers with our finance director, Janelle Lewis.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. I'm Janelle Lewis, the finance director. Today, I am going to present an ordinance for adoption to carry over the budget from 2023. Since 2023 is basically done, I still have year-end journal entries to do. But they won't necessarily affect the expenditures that you see on your screen. I apologize that I got it to you this morning at like midnight. I wanted to get everything as clear as possible so that you could see what the budget will look like. For 2023, we underspent by $2 million. So we're carrying over the money into 2024 because we have encumbrances, purchase orders that... There's things like vehicles that they couldn't get to us until 2024, time and attendance, software, other purchases that we did not make in '23 that we were going to make. And some of it has to do with ARPA dollars also. We have to obligate that by December 31st, 2024. So I wanted to make sure to carry that over so that we obligated and we have the encumbrances out there. On your screen, let me know if you want this bigger or not. There's the general fund revenues for the biennial budget amendment. Unfortunately, I didn't get the old one that we have from the last time that this was presented for a budget amendment. Beginning fund balances didn't necessarily change that much. And you can see our operating revenues for property tax. Those didn't change because we told the assessor's office this is what we're going to get. So that's basically what we budget for. Utility tax, gas, gambling tax, the total other taxes. When I present the budget again later on this year, we'll see another column in here that'll be for '29 and '30, because we'll project further out. And... So we have our expenditures. Oops. Went too far. Whoops. Here's our expenditures for the general fund. City council, city manager, finance, HR, all the different departments, the transfers that go out, and the transfer to the recreation fund, the reimbursement for utilities that we get from water, sewer, and storm for the services that we provide, our revenues over and under our operating expenditures. You can see that we do not produce enough revenue over our expenditures. And our operating transfers out, we have the ARPA fund, the ARPA dollars that stayed in the general fund that I put down below the line, and then other one-time expenditures that we have. And the transfer to street operating and... I can't remember the other fund. And then the ending fund balance. You can see that it goes down. And then in '28, we are in the red. Bottom line, not in the red, but in the red and unreserved portion. So what we're doing now to stay ahead of things, I know we've heard like different things that happened at other cities, is we're being proactive by creating this fiscal sustainability plan. So we're looking now, you know, so that it's not a huge surprise. I want everything transparent, you know, for everybody. And so you know what we're spending. And there's, during this budget process, each department will present to you what the services that they provide to the city and the residents. Then we have the inter-fund reimbursement that comes from water, sewer, storm, equipment, recreation fund, oh, street construction fund and capital improvement fund. That's where that $600,000 is transferred to. Then we have the recreation fund revenues. They were under their fund balance in 2023. And then we transferred more. So then they look better throughout the years because we're transferring more from the general fund than we used to do. I think it used to be about $500,000 or something like that. Tell me if I'm going too fast. You can see the grants down here and then the transfers that go in. $10,000 for ARPA. It was for a scholarship program. And these are the expenditures that pay for aquatics, athletic, youth, and then general recreation expenditures. Cost recovery percentage is, should be, I think it's 73 or 83 for our financial policies. But the revenues are coming up, but just not fast enough, you know, so... And then the ending fund balance for recreation. The ARPA fund. At the end of 2024, everything has been transferred out of the ARPA fund into the specific fund. So recreation fund, street construction fund, capital improvement fund for the two years. The housing needs fund. That service fund that we keep open for the bonds that we've gone out for, city hall project. The strategic reserve fund, this is, this is actually, should say 5%. So we, it's 5% of our operating expenditures goes into this fund. And this is kind of like a rainy day fund, like in case of an emergency. So that's for the general fund. So we don't only reserve 5%, we technically reserve 10%, I would say. 12% because we have that cost recovery. And then you have the fleet management fund. There's the departments pay into this for their vehicles. They purchase, they, you know, do the maintenance. The hotel motel tax fund. Tourism promotion, $25,000. The solid waste service fund. The Solid Waste Service Fund. Accumulated Reserve Fund. Street Operating Fund. So if you look at the prior report of the changes in all of these funds, if you look at the prior one, you'll see the expenditures authority went down in '23 and then increasing in '24. Stormwater Utility Fund. And the stormwater revenues are only increased 1% because we haven't done the rate study, so that's what I did for growth, you know, just 1%. Sewer Utility Fund, same thing. They use, this fund has capital projects in it also. So, you have your operating expenditures, debt service, sewage treatment, collection system, maintenance. And then down here, you have your construction projects and anything that, you know, Main Street Phase 2, SCADA upgrade, all of the different projects that they have. And then the Water Utility Fund, it's set up the same as the other utility funds. There's a Department of Commerce loan that we have to do some of the, one of the projects, I think it's the Main Street. Real Estate Excise Tax. The money in here technically is, can only be sippant on certain things, so we just transfer it to capital improvement funds to pay for those. And the Street Construction Fund, you have where motor vehicle fuel tax, your TBD license fees, it's only, it's $20. You can go up to 40 technically. You have the road impact fee for solid waste provider, and then impact fees that come in, and those typically pay for the projects that are in the Street Construction Fund. So, a list of all the different projects that we have. And then finally, we have the Capital Improvement Fund. You can see all the revenues that come in, their investments, cable peg fees, park improvement, park impact fees, rebates, wireless money, and a lot of grants, and transfers in from ARPA, General Fund, and REIT. And then the projects are again listed down below. And we track the park impact fees and show what has been paid for with the impact fees. And that is that. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Are there any questions? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you very much for this report. I'm really glad we have the numbers right in front. You've done a great job on this. And I know you're not in charge of the economy of the United States of America.
Yeah.
Or even Mont Lake Terrace. But I do see some trends that might be hitting us. One good thing about being a small city is we don't make a lot of money, but another thing is we don't lose a lot of money. I'm hoping that the new gambling institution up on 220th is going to help us out a little bit there in the gambling fund. But it's, I think with our work with doing economic development here in Mont Lake Terrace, this is really going to help us a lot.
Oh, yeah. There's a lot of room for.
Yeah, because unfortunately, we do have the problem with people not making as much money or things costing too much, and just little indicators like Starbucks, they're down 37%. And you'd think Dollar Store, we don't have a Dollar Store, but just a kind of indicator, got a dollar, go to Dollar Store. Well, they're closing 1,000 stores. And Walmart is, we don't have a Walmart, but they're the largest retail employer in the United States, and they're going to start laying people off. So I think with our city working for economic development, our Main Street project, I think will look promising. So, sorry to give you some bad news, but those are statistics. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Sonmore?
Well, I guess I go in the opposite direction. I'm very, very scared about our budget with looking at what the trend is for other cities and what's going on. You talked about our sustainability plan, and what we've done for years too is we put that on our department directors to come up with cost savings and how we're going to do that. Have we already started implementing how much we're spending on different things and where we can save? You know, what is that saying? Watch the pennies and the dollars will follow. We've always heard that for years here, but we know that it's going to be a rough time ahead. I know we're going to have development, but we're in the red in 2028. And we talked about that about a year and a half ago, and we haven't even talked about the pool needing all that money for the pool. So, there's going to have to be some cuts somewhere. And if we can look at sustainability now, I know we're going out to our citizens, but our citizens aren't going to solve all our problems. They might say where they'd like to have money saved and where they'd like to see money not spent, but they're not in the day-to-day operations, and so they may want more money spent on the pavilion where we know we need more money spent on something else. And I know it's a piece of it, and I know I'm really glad that we're having a budget committee, but I still think it's internal that we need to start now and always have that budget. You know, how much do we spend on food for an event? How much do we spend on this for an event? And I know it's, it sounds very budget-related, but we are a city, and we're responsible for the dollars coming in and the dollars that we spend. So, have we already implemented through our directors where we're looking at to save money?
Yeah, we are doing that currently. So, every month, I run a report for the City Manager, and he, and I include the ELT, the Executive Leadership Team, on that email with the reports that I give them, and it shows like what their expenditures are for the month.
Because I know.
Two months prior. And then we keep an eye on it and everything and looking for cost savings. I mean, we saved $2 million. You know, we didn't, granted, it was probably, you know, the demand, the supply, you know, didn't come in for vehicles and stuff like that, you know.
But those dollars were spent, though. I mean, I don't think, sometimes it's hard to see a clear picture of the budget, and, you know, when we looked at it a couple years ago, we could see that we're going in the red. Even some of our expenditures that I sign off are over $1 million. And, you know, average between $500,000 and $650,000, but there's some that, you know, are millions, and I hate signing off on those and looking at some of the expenditures we have. And I know the staff gets tired of how we have to scrimp and save, but that's how we've gotten by for years. And, you know, we have so many new people in that it's really important that, you know, we look at all those cost savings everywhere we can. And Brian would probably be saying the same thing, too. It's just, I'm real worried about seeing that red number within a couple of years. And we are fortunate that maybe builders will come in, but, you know, Rick, you alluded to, you know, we don't always know what the economy is going to do. And it's so fun to be up here when things are good, but when they're really bad, they're horrible. When we have to look at who's going to be laid off and who's going to do that. That's why I like scrimping and saving, so we don't have to lay those people off. If we save money here, even if it's $100 here or there, it adds up. And it's really important that we look at different things like that. And it's really important that we train our young staff right now to look at the budget because maybe they have never been through a layoff or look at how difficult it is to lay off. And I just always want to push that is, we need to scrimp and save, and it's not easy, but sometimes we don't always get what we want in order to, you know, save a job.
And those big items that you see that are being purchased when you get that report and you sign off on it, we make sure that on the first couple of pages, it shows the fund that those expenditures are coming out of. And so you'll notice that the fund that they're coming out of is usually a construction fund, which usually has a lot of grants in it. So, the grants are paying for those invoices that are huge dollars. So...
I always feel like I'm the bad person saying about saving money, but this is something that we should all really embrace because we do that at home, right? We look at how we spend our dollars and different things. It's not any different with the council. We just have to always be very cognizant about what we're spending money on because there's, something's always going to break or something's always going to fall apart. And you're right, getting those grants have been, you know, and that's why our lobbyists are so important, too.
Yeah.
And people that, you know, have grant writers and different things. So, those are all appreciative, but it's just, you know, telling you something you already don't know, but it's just reinforcing the fact that, you know, it's very important to save those dollars.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a visual person, so can you go back to the slide that had that scary red color? And while you're doing that, let me also echo thank you for the work that you have consistently put before us. And if you have to get that to me in the morning of, we would be okay with that because we know that meant you spent that much more time of your critical eye and care on that document. So, thank you for that. That said, when we get to the red number, Councilmember Ryan brought this to the table already, so I apologize. I just need to hear it in my way of asking and see if it plays out with my visual need. So, as Councilmember Sonmore has just pointed out, and let me also let you know you are not alone. I suspect everybody up here is not happy with that red and definitely agrees with you that we need to figure out how to get in front of this, whatever that looks like. And being frugal is not a negative word. That said, we do know that economic development, i.e. apartment building going up, is not an insignificant thing because it impacts these numbers that we're looking at. So, I feel like I ask this every time, so again, apologies if it is, but it's always good to hear it again. We do know we have three significant communities moving in, and I'm calling them communities because we're talking like 600 units in some cases, which for those of you who are like me, and you're like, how many is that? Well, if you look at Terrace Station 3, I believe that's 200 units approximately. So, you look at the size of that, now triple it, in case you hate doing division and math and all that good stuff. That's just telling you that's a community coming in. Three of those scheduled that we know of, are those already accounted for in the yellow line?
They are not.
Perfectly. Everybody heard? They are not. Now that said, when they do make their way into this, because again, perhaps don't count your chickens before they hatch type of thing, but they're pretty far along the process, they're out in the public sphere, we're not saying anything, no trade secrets here, they look like they're going to happen. Again, three of these new communities coming in to this beautiful, large community. When they do hit this budget, does that red number significantly change, hopefully towards this black, but does it change at all? And that's really just so we get, me personally, get my head around. So if I bring in three large communities, and I keep thinking that economic development is the path to victory, here's a prime example. It's not accounted for, but it should be hopefully by 2025. Will that change as we trickle it, move it forward? And I guess, I don't know, you can give a concrete yes it will, but again, just conceptually, knowing that those three are coming, will that do something to that budget, to that red number?
Oh, yeah. You can see the building permits, the development service fees on this page. In 2021, there was a huge developer that came in, I'm assuming, I wasn't here then, but came in, and so that increased substantially. And then it's trickling down, and then in the future, it'll increase again.
Perfect. Thank you for bringing evidence, because again, that's very helpful for me. And I vaguely remember seeing those booms. I also remember Sonmore pointed out, those were the glory days in my head, in my little five years, but I'm just saying, I remember those as well, those big booms. But, that stated, then I say, well, the seven of us responsibility-wise, then it seems like we should make sure, and I know we've said this again and again and again, that we need to focus on economic development. So even though earlier this morning, you heard me, it feels like it was this morning, earlier today, you heard me make a joke about favorite departments, there isn't a favorite. It's all our favorites, but again, there are some pieces of this puzzle we have to prioritize. And if we're getting out of that red, you know, to at least just maintain, going back to Councilmember Murray's point, are we here to maintain? Are we here to grow? We haven't even talked about grow. We're declining. So I'm hoping that we're inspired to figure out, well, what's the things we can do for the economic development that will clear this up? Because again, we do have evidence that we at least have a moment in time where we're going to have a boom, that those three communities coming, but let's not make that the end. And what I'm hearing through our processes is that we're still got, we've still got a lot of codes to clean up. We still have a lot of telling our story that needs to happen. So just putting that back in front of us as this is not a, we don't know what to do. It's just a good reminder, we need to do it sooner. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I also just want to add, what our Finance Director is showing up there is development service fees, and of course, we will get those at a one-time clip, but those communities also pay into our two largest revenue sources, which are property tax and sales tax. Once those units are filled, and once the construction is complete, property tax, but also once those units are filled, providing opportunities for the folks that live there to spread their money throughout our community will also come back.
Real estate excise tax did the same thing. You'll see it go up that one year, and then, you know, trickles down, goes slower, and it'll increase again.
Thank you both for that. And I would just say, I don't in any way, shape, or form go, hey, problem solved, because it will just be again pushed further out. So again, it's the cleaning up the code, it's figuring out how to get that word out there, which again, all in my heart seems to tie back to the economic development. As we support all of the other departments to embrace that, Parks Department will hear that I go on record as we are the best in the area. But nonetheless, that's a foreshadow for my public comments or my council comments. But thank you for your report.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Janelle, as always, and for all of the incredible work getting our finances to a point of clarity for us. Super helpful. I know, I appreciate all of my colleagues' thoughts around our budget, and I absolutely agree that we've got work to do, and I think we've got work to do later in our agenda in terms of talking about our long-range financial sustainability plan, and I know we'll have robust conversations as we get into our budget for this coming biennium. But I guess the question before us right now, correct, is that we have leftover funds from 2023 that we are looking to roll over to 2024, and we need to have a public hearing about it, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure I'm tracking. So we need to open the public hearing if we don't have more questions? Is that...
Yes.
Okay, awesome.
I was supposed to open the public hearing before the questions, right? So now we can open the public hearing, and then we can have comments. Okay. Who wants to open the public hearing? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to open public hearing for the vote on ordinance for the 2023 budget carryovers. Is that correct? Is that correct? Thank you.
Second.
So there's been a, um, uh, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open. Uh, do we have any written comments on this?
No one signed up in person to give testimony, and no one signed up for online, and no one had submitted written comments.
Thank you. Okay, um, now, if we have any questions for the staff, this is where we, we're supposed to ask the questions, but go ahead, uh, council member Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'll, I'll just take the opportunity to say, uh, thank you, Janela, for, for doing this sort of, this technical thing that, that this motion represents. I think you and, and your colleagues have, um, you know, are, are doing something that is, is quite important to sort of the foundation of, of all of our, our work here. I think it was about a year ago, few months into, um, you know, my career here, um, on council, recall us getting a, a report from the state auditor saying we had, we, we could do better. And, um, I, I think what, what we're, um, seeing here tonight, uh, represents that. So thank you for, for getting us back on track and for, um, you know, preparing us for all of these conversations to come. So, um, that's it for me. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there, are there any more questions? Okay, if not, I'm going to, uh, ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Now, um, is there a motion to approve this ordinance? Do we have any more questions before we go on to that?
Yes, I just, uh, is there any further discussion?
Oh, are there any further more, any more further discussion? I don't see any hands going up. So now, we can, um, have a motion to approve this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I make a motion to approve, uh, the ordinance for the 2023 budget carryover.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay. I think that's the end of that. So, I think we're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next is another public hearing. And we're going to review, and have a public hearing and vote on the ordinance. Ordinance on, on ordinance for franchise agreement with Zayo, with our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. On, uh, in July of 2013, uh, the council approved ordinance number 2624 that granted a non-exclusive franchise to Zayo Group LLC. That, uh, franchise agreement was good for 10 years and did expire, uh, in the middle of last year, and we are bringing forth a new 10-year agreement for the council's consideration tonight at the public hearing. Uh, and you did speak about this at your last meeting, and we went over, uh, the particulars for the first reading. This would be the second reading and public hearing. And, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do I ask for questions now, or do I open the public hearing first?
Open the public hearing first.
All right. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to open public hearing for the ordinance for franchise agreement with Zayo.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So public hearing is now open. And are there any written, um, comments or any, anyone?
No one signed up in person, no one pre-registered for online, and no written comments were submitted.
Thank you. All right. So, does anybody on the council have any questions? I don't see, oh. No? Okay. I saw, um, I don't see any hands, so now we're going to close the, um...
Like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And public hearing is now closed. And now we're going to vote on the ordinance. Councilmember Ryan? Did you want to do that one too?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, uh, make a motion to vote on the ordinance for the franchise agreement with Zayo.
We could, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, if we could make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Sorry, I'm, didn't put my glasses on.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Wow, we're done with that one. Now let's, uh, move to review the, review and vote on the art de, deaccessioning. The, is that a word? With our recreation and parks director Jeff Betts.
Well, good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, council members. I'm Jeff Betts, the Recreation Parks Director for the city, and deaccessioning is a word. So, uh, the storage facilities, how this has all began, why I'm here tonight, is we have storage facilities right down the hill from here that we affectionately call the bunkers. And so those bunkers are getting ready for demolition for the Veterans Memorial Park Trail Project. And lo and behold, we have some artwork in there. An eight-foot by four-foot piece of art called Terrace Light. And, uh, that piece of art was actually created for the city's 50th birthday celebration in 2004. It was displayed at the old city hall behind the front counter. It is about 600 pounds, and it is a, you know, like I mentioned, a, a glass panel that displays mountains, the sun and the sky. So when city hall was moved to the redstone building, Terrace Light remained at the storage facility since there was nowhere to put it there at the new redstone or at the temporary redstone city hall. So that, uh, 600-pound piece of art requires a forklift to maneuver, and thus, that's why it's been there the whole time. The glass studio that created that piece of art, it's called Peter David Studio, has since been sold to another company, and that, uh, company actually does other kinds of work now. So we did, uh, contact that company and asked them to assess the value and also see if they wanted to buy it back. So no takers on that, but, uh, this piece of art is listed in the city's inventory, and it was purchased with city funds, just not 1% for art funds. So the second piece of art, uh, is called Untitled. It doesn't have a name, but it is a, a velour wall hanging, and some people call it the whale. I think you've all seen it a time or two, but it also used to be hung at the old city hall. And it was actually in the council chambers at the former, former, former city hall that used to be on the site. And that one is also eight-foot by four-foot in size, and that was acquired with 1% for art, uh, in 1983, and the artist was Rebecca Edwards. Staff tried and were not successful in locating that artist. The piece is over 40 years old now, and, uh, it also has been in storage for 15 years since we moved from two maneuver, I guess it'd be two moves ago. So, uh, basically, I'm here because those two pieces of art and, and also the bunker, one of them that's in, um, staff have followed the process, the deaccessioning process for this art, that council approved that policy in May 2021. And, uh, in creating this policy, the Arts Commission worked with staff over several meetings, and, uh, really the whole genesis of this policy is to allow the city to remove art from the ownership or, or inventory by the city, and it includes many steps to take prior to deaccession of that artwork. Uh, that policy was approved by council, uh, but there hasn't been an instance where it's been utilized yet, until now, it's the first time we've taken this to council. The Arts Advisory Commission, as required in the policy, has signed two letters to recommend the deaccessioning of that art, both pieces of art, based on different reasons. And those are included as attachments tonight. So one, Terrace Light, it no longer has a location to display, and due to its size and weight, will be very, very, very difficult to maneuver. The Untitled Velour Wall Hanging piece has also aged greatly, and the velour material has degraded to the point of no longer being able to display safely. The deaccessioning policy does state how do we go about removing this artwork from the collection, and also states reasons why the city would want to do, and also how to follow that path. These two pieces of art do satisfy some of the following requirements. First of all, the condition, I'll just mention some of the requirements, but there is a list of them, and, uh, the main two that apply are the condition of the work requires restoration in gross excess of its aesthetic value, or in such a deteriorate state that restoration would prove either unfeasible and practical or misleading, and the work is rarely or never displayed, although the rest of the reasons are mentioned in the memo. But city staff did follow the recommendations and the requirements, I should say, in the deaccessioning policy. Uh, we contacted the artists, and also, uh, the commission prepared a report, and those are the letters received. The city attorney did provide an opinion, and we explained the rationale in the letter. Uh, there's also, um, there's also things that we're supposed to do, like follow, um, to get an independent appraisal or other documentation of the value of the artwork, and then also find some related professional opinions, and then look into the history of each piece. So with that, staff are recommending that the deaccessioning and destruction of Terrace Light and the Untitled Velour Wall Hanging would occur, and potentially the glass, the large Terrace Light one would occur with a demolition of the storage facility, which is scheduled for June 3rd, pending this decision, obviously. And without we take any questions.
Are there any questions? I was just going to look this. So I know that, uh, I was told what the, and it was on one of these things, uh, what we paid for it.
The glass piece?
Uh, yes, and... Do we have to destroy it, or can, can we try to sell it?
It's, it's up to the council. This is just the recommendation of the commission was to, basically because of its unwieldiness, that it's eight-foot by four-foot, and it's six inches thick glass, that it would be very, very difficult to, to move. Last time, we did move it with a forklift, but since we moved it down there, the access has been reconfigured when we constructed the police station, so we do not know how we would, we'd have to go all the way around and bring in a heavy piece of equipment to maneuver that glass.
So it would cost more to move it than what it's worth?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I believe it was about $10,000 when we got it. I was on the Arts Commission when we got it, and the, um, gentleman who built it, um, used his father's studio, and he was a Mount Lake Terrace High School graduate. And, um, unfortunately, it was extremely heavy, and, you know, we couldn't really put it in the ground, and we didn't have a place in the new city hall for it. And, um, the wall hanging that used to hang behind council, um, we used to run into it, and it was, and it's been, it, it, it served it, its life very well over all the years. Scott should have taken it home with him. I think Ken should have taken it home with him, but it did serve a good purpose and, um, a life well-lived. And so the only thing I don't want to decommission in is the bronze sculpture that we're disrespecting over by the, um, uh, police department. And so, um, that's something I would like to get on display, because I know art is in the, um, eyes of the beholder, and it's gotten a bad rap, but it actually is a very expensive piece of art. Bronze is extremely expensive, especially during the era that, that was built. Now bronze is a lot of copper and different metals mixed in, but, um, these two pieces of artwork, I hate decommissioning because artists put a lot of heart and soul into them, but the, the rug has very well-served its life. Um, it was in our city hall for years and years and years. And the glass piece, I'm glad you mentioned about selling it, but, um, the 600 pounds, unless we could find somebody who would pay to lift it out of there and, um, take it. But it, it was unfortunately, um, a little impractical, and, um, it was something that, um, the Art Commission got to vote on, and so, um, I, I think we're doing the right thing.
Well, I still hate to destroy art, but anyways, we need to do what we need to do. All right, so, um, I'm still trying to find the... So, um, do we vote on this tonight? Okay. There it is. All right, so who would like to? Rory Payne Donovan, would you like to?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to vote on deaccessioning the art, two art pieces, as recommended by the Recreation Parks Director, and the Arts Commission went through it, and, I don't know, staff. Can we vote on that? To, uh, accept the deaccessioning?
And destruction of the Terrace Light and Untitled Velour Wall Hanging?
Oh. Okay, uh, better name it than the Terrace Light and the Untitled Velour Wall Hanging.
All right. Who's going to second that?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now we can destroy two pieces of art?
Thank you.
That I hate to see destroyed. But, um, so next is the review and vote on the interlocal agreement with WashDOT for I-5 Culverts Fish Passage Project with our stormwater program manager Laura Reed.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Um, I have, uh, three items for which, the first is the WashDOT interlocal agreement. I would just like to say that legal review has been completed for all of the agreements and the grant contract for this, for that I'm going to speak about. This is part of a statewide effort by WashDOT to remove fish barriers. There is, uh, there are three fish barriers in the city of Mount Lake Terrace associated with the, um, five-foot culvert underneath I-5 that goes from where Macalure Creek leaves Lake Ballenger, um, and two on and off ramp culverts that will, um, need to be replaced with fish-passable culverts. Um, this agreement allows WashDOT to reimburse MLT, reimburse, um, Mount Lake Terrace for staff time spent on project meetings, review and inspection. And there will be a second agreement with WashDOT to cover upsizing of the sewer's trunk line, which crosses one of the culverts to be replaced behind the Cinnabar, uh, between the Cinnabar and the back of the Cinnabar in I-5. Are there any questions? Are there any questions?
Go ahead, Councilmember Salmore.
So we have a citizen, Jet Tobin, in our community for, he's been here for 60 years and he always wants to know where we've built those apartments on the old Evergreen site. The water would come down and, but the water flows from Lake Ballenger into those culverts, right? It's not coming down and going the other way, is it? Because there's, there's that stream, you know, because he lives right up above it and there was that stream there for years and years and years. And he said when they started building, it dried up and he was very, very concerned with that. And so I always have to be the voice of him just to ask these questions of when that culvert gets replaced, the water flow is coming from Ballenger and it's going down to Lake Washington. Is that correct with that culvert behind Cinnabar?
Yes, I understand where you're talking about because we had talked about this earlier. This is a, this is a intermittent stream that's classified by Fish and Wildlife as intermittent that is, goes around Terrace Station and drains into Mackey Creek, which then Mackey Creek drains down into. So it's above Lake Ballenger. So it's, it's not, it's, it is fed by groundwater in that location.
So that culvert will not affect that?
No, it's in a different area. Yeah. It's significantly downstream of that area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So, do I see anyone else's hands? So this also includes the portion underneath the freeway.
The, that portion is entirely within the WashDOT right of way. The culvert where the sewer line crosses is behind the Cinnabar.
Oh, so that's what we're going to be working on.
Between the Cinnabar and the Amqua Bank. That, it's a very small area that's outside the WashDOT right of way on private property, but also intersects with our sewer trunk line. So we are working out an agreement with WashDOT to upsize our sewer trunk line at the same time, which is very cost effective for the city to do.
Okay.
That's, that's going to be a separate agreement, which I will come to you about.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so I don't see any other hands going up, so. Councilmember, oh, go ahead.
Move to authorize the city manager to execute the interlocal agreement between the city and WashDOT.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, so next is the review and vote on the resolution to accept the 2024 Wash, Washington Department of Natural Resources Grant for Forest Plan and Street Tree Inventory.
Yes, I mean, this is very exciting news. We have a grant that was written by a Mount Lake Terrace resident, Audrey Meyer, with help from city staff. It was a very competitive grant selection through the Department of Natural Resources. There were 120 grants submitted, applications submitted, only 45 were awarded. One of those was $120,000 to Mount Lake Terrace to produce an urban forest management plan and a street tree inventory. No match is required for this grant. And the grant contract is not yet available from Mount Lake Terrace for signature, but all of the scope and budget have been approved by the Department of Natural Resources. Are there any questions about this one?
Yeah. See, I'm trying to open this one up. Any questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Salmore.
This is one of those things that almost a proclamation should be. She is done, she is on the Park and Rec Board, but Audrey is a wealth of knowledge and we owe her a debt of gratitude for going this extra mile to, to do this for us. And she is such a joy to have on our committee. And so you're right, this is, this is something to celebrate.
Yeah, I agree. She is, she's really great.
Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to pile on to that comment and just say a little backstory. We often have in our rotation, Ken have a photo and if you look at it closely, you'll see it's Audrey, but she's representing it, her organization at the time. But I remember talking to her because she wasn't involved, if you will, in the politics or anything like that at the time, but she was talking about the tree canopy. And so all these years later, to have just taken the reins and said, okay, I'm going to get this thing funded and probably will lead the actual process if I had no R P A C now. It's just really exciting and I hope inspirational for others out there who, for whatever reason, don't think government hears you or wants to support your ideas. I promise you, from my perspective, this was her idea, or at least it aligned with ideas with the staff in it, but she was that energy that kept it going. And kudos to her and her hubby, who are the Ivy League leads as well, although they would say there's a bunch of others, but nonetheless, just saying that in other ways to get involved, it's just exciting. And again, the bigger message being for those of us residents who are just thinking, how can I do something? I had an idea. Speak up. There's room for your ideas, please. So, but again, thank you for the work you do as well.
Thank you.
So Councilmember Salmore, did you want to do the?
Oh, sorry. I was just reading something from Ken about her. Sorry, I had to look something up real fast. Let me go back there.
The recommended motion?
Move to authorize the city manager to execute the grant contract between the city and Wash D N R in the amount not to exceed $120,000.
Second.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
And you're here for the next one, which is the review and vote on contract for urban forest management plan and street tree inventory?
Yes, thank you. So because this is a specialized skill set in terms of developing urban forest management plans and doing street tree inventory, we are, we have at the city submitted an RFPs to request proposals from various firms to do this work. This was a competitive process. Five proposals were submitted and a selection panel of two residents and two city staff selected Planet Geo as the most qualified firm. They were selected based on their experience, their team qualifications and the completeness of the approach that was provided. The inventory will identify hazard street trees and assess maintenance requirements as well as determining whether we have certain street trees that are overrepresented and might present a vulnerability for tree disease, for example. This will be the first street tree inventory for the city and I think it's long overdue to know what we have and to start managing that. The plan, of course, will be our roadmap for maintaining and adding trees as Mount Lake Terrace grows. Are there any questions about the contract?
Do I see any hands going up? No, so this is for the contract. I wanted to say something about trees. When we do get to the point where we're going to be picking trees for, let's really, really look into what, how the roots go because even though the trees picked in some cities that I walk along, when they get to a certain age, the sidewalk is popping up. So I would like to have us avoid that, if at all possible. But anyways, who wants, go ahead, Councilmember, Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute the professional services agreement between the city and the Plan It Geo Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $120,000.
Second. So it's been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so number 13 on our agenda tonight is the review, review scope of work for the Long Range Financial Planning Sustainability Consultant with our deputy city manager, Carolyn
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Glad to be with you. All right. I'm here tonight to discuss the scope of work for the Long Range Financial Sustainability Task Force and the consultant that we hope to hire in a couple of months. So one, I want to make sure that we're on the same page about what the task force will do because that will impact the scope of work for the consultant. And so this is in preparation for writing an RFP to hire a consultant. We're here because of the information like Janelle Lewis, our finance director, just shared with you, that our revenues and expenditures are not where we would like to see them and we're seeing a gap as soon as next year, depending on how our projections compare to actual revenues and expenditures. And while we're able to fill that gap with end of fund balance for a while, there will be a time when we won't be able to do that. And again, that is dependent on a lot of different things. And here are some reasons why we are in this situation right now. So one is we're a growing city. We have a lot of demands to keep up with maintenance and growth, but also there are a lot of restrictions placed on us by the state for how we can collect funding. And primarily, the primary funds that we have are property and sales tax and there are restrictions on how much we can raise those taxes. Also inflation and the cost of living in the Seattle metropolitan area are pretty significant compared to the rest of the country. And those also have an impact on construction costs, which are a lot of the costs that we are seeing in our capital projects as well. There's a high demand for workers and as we've spoken about for the last few months, that has an impact on how much we pay people. And if we can't find workers, it means we're hiring consultants and other types of contractors to supplement our workforce. Also, we've talked about the cost of insurance and the need to supplement our capital project fund with the general fund and that has an impact on how much we can spend on operations. So with the projection and a shortfall in our revenues, between our revenues and our expenditures, we want to engage with our community to talk about what they expect of us and whether we want to continue with the levels of service that we have as we grow, which means actually our level of service might change a little. And also to have their advice in thinking about impacts to their wallet and impacts to services so that we can make decisions that we feel strongly about as a group and that the community supports those decisions. So the goal of working with a community group is to allow them to learn not just about our finances, but sort of the operations and the level of service that we're providing in each area of the city and to provide more conversation and deliberation about that question. Like, is the level of service today where we want to be? Are we maintaining our assets the way we want to? Where do we want to see additional facilities or not? If we had to make cuts, what would that look like? And ultimately, consult with the broader community, have that group consult with the broader community in a public forum to vet some of their ideas so that they can make some recommendations to the city council that are founded in good research, both on a technical side and with the broader community. So the consultant in this role would help in three major areas. They would help us plan for this process. There's a lot of great ideas from staff on this, but it's also something that's going on across the region and it would be great to get some ideas on what's been working well and what hasn't. So help us develop the curriculum, think about speakers who might come in, think about different ways to engage the community during the discussion so it's not just presenting information. Of course, we want to hear from people. And then this consultant would facilitate the meetings because it's nicer to have a third party, you know, interact between staff and the community. And not that we wouldn't have a role as staff, we'd have lots of different speakers come forward from department heads to the city manager and other staff as needed. But the consultant would help facilitate the meetings, develop communications and a marketing strategy to the community to let people know what's going on and help with presentations to the city council. Ultimately, they would assist in developing strategies and recommendations that would be presented to the city council. They would be preparing reports and advising staff and council on next steps. So in our midterm budget, we did have $25,000 approved by city council to start this work. We're anticipating that the work would start in the fall. We'd like to get a consultant on board this summer to start with the planning process, but that the task force wouldn't meet until the fall. And there would be additional work throughout 2025 and maybe into early 26, but the funding for the rest of the project would be proposed once we have a consultant on board and we've had a chance to consult with them on the methodology and the costs. And we would put that forward in the budget process. So the, again, the timeline that we're thinking about is working towards consultant selection in the early summer, working with you on what the recruitment process looks like for the task force, and then convening the group in the fall and looking towards late 2025 or early 26 to make recommendations to city council. And that's all I have. I'm open to questions or thoughts that you have.
Councilmember Salmore?
I'll try and keep my cool about this, but, so we were just talking about not trying to hire consultants. Can I ask how many people would be on this task force?
That is up for discussion. We haven't settled on the number.
So it wouldn't be more than 25?
No.
So if we look at that, if we have 10 people on the task force and we're spending $25,000, I've seen where this has gone before is a lot of times the city doesn't want responsibility or to be blamed if we're not meeting our budget. And so we put it out into our community and we have 10 people kind of to decide where our money should go. So we really have to educate them. You can't cut people in this area, but we could cut our police department out because we don't have to technically have a police department. We don't have fire anymore. You know, we were a completely full-service city and we're not anymore. So we'd have 10 people decide whether we're going to have the pool or not. And it's just sometimes we are fully staffed right now and I guess that's what I was asking earlier for is how come the department heads aren't doing a lot of this? A lot of times we take, we don't want to make these hard decisions, so we throw them at a consultant and we throw them at the community and we know there's only like 10 people on that committee that we're trying to educate. And with our city, there is so much with our budget that is confined. So if we take our budget department, we, we can't go any thinner on our budget department. So that one's kind of off the budget. And I think sometimes we're the ones who have to make the hard decisions and we have to have, it's, it's, you should be educating us more on what's going on with the budget because, you know, you were just talking about balancing the budget with more construction coming in and we know that's not a long-term fix for fixing our budget is having construction to come in. It helps us now, and Steve said that and he acknowledged in the future that, you know, we'll have to do something different. But a lot of times, I don't know if we're postponing the inevitable because each department really knows what they should be doing and how they should be spending the money because we're constricted on what we need. It's really nice to have a committee to come in and educate them. And we used to do that with budget meetings and we'd show them, okay, you can't spend money out of this. This can only go to street. out of this. This can only go to street and sewer. And by the way, your water is never going to be coming down. And if I was a citizen, I'd say, okay, I want my water to come down. Well, guess what? We have consultants coming in about every six years to tell us how it's going to go up and incrementally go up. So sometimes to me, it's preparing the, the community on how their services are never going to go down in cost. They're always going to be going up due to inflation and different things. And the other thing you'd be looking for this committee is how are we going to fund the pool? Okay, it's $50 million, but right now council may want to make that decision because we're not educated on what's going on with the pool negotiations of we're going to work with another city or we're going to have a private company come in. And so instead, we're throwing it at a committee where we should be educated on what's going on with that budget. And we should be in part of that committee and being educated during a work session on how these monies are going to be spent because we're very limited on what a city can do with their money. And so part of me, I know we need to involve the citizens, but if there's only 10, why don't we just invite the whole community to our work sessions where we talk about this budget and talk about, okay, this funding can only be spent here. And if you want your water to go down, primarily we'll give you lessons on how to reduce your water flow and use special devices on, you know, so your water doesn't leak. And you can tell I've been through this once before or twice or three times. And then if you don't want to pay more for fire, well, that's out of our control. So we don't have any more on fire, but police, we might have some. We could go take our police department and put it into Seattle, or we could contract with somewhere else, or we could go to the sheriff's office. Or what we would do with each department, that's something I think we should look at and understand and make the hard decisions. Instead of putting it on the committee and saying, we're coming back. And these are people that have never even seen the budget primarily because we don't know who's going to be on it. So I can assume they don't know the budget. And we're going to educate them for $25,000 to tell, come to us, to tell us the hard truth that we should already know about what's going on with our budget. So that's why I have concerns about what's going on here and looking at people to help us. It would be nice to have maybe a consultant that's very good with a budget come in, but we already have a good budget director. And so that's where I'm getting some flashbacks of what we've done before. And then we get this nice neat little package and we're already doing what we're supposed to be doing, looking at what we can cut. But what I'd like to see is the directors come back to us, and that's what we've done for years. They come back and say, I have this much money and I'm going to save it on here, but you cannot cut this. And so we look at that instead of throwing it out to a consultant that we're trying to not have too many consultants. And so that's where all the red flags start popping up is who, who in the city is supposed to be doing this? And why aren't we getting a report from our city staff on what we're supposed to be doing? Because we just looked at our budget, right? And, and now we get this report and it kind of sends a mixed message on, okay, we're not, we're going to be in the red pretty soon, but guess what? We need to be thinking ahead on how to fund these buckets of money that are not going to be there. And we're not the only ones going into the red. There's, look at Marysville School District. That's a big debacle right now. And, and just putting it out to a committee is, is nice, but what about us? We're the ones who are supposed to be knowing this. We're the ones who are supposed to be educated on this during work sessions. And it's just something that just seems like we're putting off the inevitable and having somebody else kind of take the heat for it. And so I, I know that's a lot to swallow and a lot to understand, but a task force, as we've seen, is a very minute part of the community. And we're not getting a whole lot of volunteers to help. I could see for $25,000, if we had like 100 people come in and tell us about our budget, but it's going to be interesting to find people to do it. And we all have the same type of people that we know will probably do it. But why aren't we doing this? Why aren't we looking at what we should cut and what we should talk about before going out to the community? And then if the community asks me, I'm like, I don't know. You know, I don't know what we're doing with our pool. I don't know what we're doing with our police department. I don't know how we're going to fund stuff, but I do know your water and your taxes are never going to go down. So what we're going to be looking at at the end is how we're going to increase their taxes to pay for what we really want. And so, and there's going to be 10 people that are going to be deciding that. And then it'll come to us and then ultimately we'll have to decide anyhow. So it's just something to think about. It's nice and neat in this nice little package, but it's something that council should be already working on during our work sessions.
Thank you for your comments, Councilmember Sonmore. Just wanted to address a couple of them. One is, staff is very committed to making sure that council is aware of what's going on with our finances in the current year and in the future years. And Janella, our finance director, has presented to you our council budget process for this year, and it has several study sessions or work sessions where various directors will be coming forward and explaining exactly what I just mentioned, the service, you know, the level of service that we're providing, the budget, and any new asks or reductions that they're looking at. So we do take that very seriously, and we do look forward to having several work sessions with you on that this year. This work is looking further into the future, and we certainly would keep you in the loop as things go forward. I wanted to just reiterate that this would be a way to, as council has talked about, having community members who can be ambassadors to the broader community and talking about these very significant issues that would address things that are provided to them already, how that may change in the future, and costs that they may be sharing in on the future, in the future as well.
Can you rebuttal that comment, please? So if we have 10 people, what?
Never mind.
Go ahead.
No, no, I've.
Did you want to say something?
I didn't see your hand up, so that's why I said.
She can go first.
My only question was, if we have 10 people and you're guaranteeing that they're going to go out and tell people, how, how is there any guarantee on that? I mean, if I, I had a girlfriend on a committee and she, and she never told anybody about anything because she didn't realize that she should have gone and knocked on all her neighbors' doors and told them. And so I, I know we used to have that commercial, so and so told somebody and so and so is supposed to tell, but, but how is that committee supposed to go out and educate people? We've, we've tried that for years and I'm just not sure how that works.
I think the one, we haven't decided on the number of people. Two, I think as we develop the scope of work for the task force, we need to be clear in the recruitment of what's expected. And also, as I mentioned, one of the ideas is that that task force convenes community members, and we haven't decided how that, what that looks like yet. But I know that there's been, in the past in this city, there's been not only the typical public meeting that we have, but also people hosting meetings in their homes or their own neighborhoods and different ways about reaching out to folks. So that's all part of the.
They would have to be people in our community, right? Because you said they might be people in our community. I mean, they would have to be.
Of course. I didn't say that they might be. I said that they might host meetings in their home.
Before that, a couple sentences before that, you mentioned something about they should be citizens or something.
No, no.
And then it, and it wouldn't be any more than 25 people.
I said there probably wouldn't be more than 25 people, but that's to be determined both by you and recommendations from the consultant.
And, and the reason I'm throwing it out here, because we just talked about saving money and now we're throwing $25,000 at a problem that we already have to solve anyhow.
Yes, staff would be very involved. I do want to reiterate that. Both Jeff and I and the directors would be very involved in speaking and being at the various meetings. The idea behind having a facilitator is that they have experience in hosting these kinds of meetings, that they have communications and marketing experience in how to share information with the community in a more simplistic way to get more people involved in the process. And that they could also bring some expertise in how to solve budget issues like this and bring forward different revenue options or ways to think about reducing budget that might be unique for communities.
And I'm bringing that up too because all the council wanted to know how we were going to educate our public on their comp plan. And so maybe we should hire that consultant to help us with our comp plan to get that message out. I just don't know how that message is going to get out to everybody. I'm done.
Do you still want to?
Yes.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Mayor, and I apologize if I interrupted the earlier conversation. Yeah, I just wanted to comment and, and had some, some questions about sort of the outreach, but I do think the, the scope as presented makes good sense and sort of meets at least my expectations for sort of what, what we're doing in terms of long range planning. And I, I'm really glad that we're having a, an open dialogue with community. You know, we have to start somewhere and we've got some, some really difficult conversations. And without sort of these opportunities to have these conversations, of course, we in this room are going to be faced with some, some sobering decisions. But, you know, I, I think if, if you're able to now or in the future, like sort of, you know, I'm, I'm interested in, in hearing about sort of how we, we do get really strong engagement for, for folks to understand sort of the, the give and take that, that we're considering. And, and, you know, we've recently at our retreat and in meetings discussed some, some really big ticket items that really key to the identity of Mount Lake Terrace. So sort of understanding how, you know, we, you know, we, we, we get to sort of both education and some, some better community conversation around, you know, these things coming down the pike. I'm really interested in that. So I guess my, my one sort of action item request for, you know, response now and in the future is sort of understanding, you know, better, you know, what that, that community engagement element looks like from the, from this plan and consulting services.
Yes, we will, in the request for proposals, we will outline that as an objective of this work for their guidance and support and community engagement. I can tell you that developing a community engagement program that reaches communities out, whose voices we haven't been hearing from for a long time, takes time. And as I know that there's frustration with the process with the comp plan, but we are making some progress. It just takes time. It takes time to develop the relationships. It takes time for those folks to trust us and want to meet with us. And it takes time for us to listen to what they want to tell us before they're willing to hear what we have to tell them and what we'd like to hear from them. And so as much as we want this to happen quickly and to hear from lots and lots of people from different communities, we're doing what we can at the moment and we aspire to do far better in the future. And I, I just want to, want you to know that's a commitment from myself and the team here at the city and that we're, we're just doing what we can with what we have at the moment. And we have plans to do far more. Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Deputy City Manager. I do have some questions, and I guess I want to start with one, recognizing that this is something we have asked staff to do, and this is something we've talked about as a council on numerous occasions, as we have known that we have some budgetary challenges that we need to figure out a solution to. So I appreciate you putting this together, you know, to give us an opportunity to have these conversations and figure out what the path ahead looks like. And I have been very on board. I'm like, yes, we need this. And I will say that as I was taking a little bit of time to reflect on the agenda as we were, as I was preparing for the meeting, and a little bit about the conversation that we had had about our goals at the last meeting, I think to council member, what are bringing back up, you know, kind of my, my question in our last meeting, we were talking about goals, about levels of service and maybe not understanding what our community wants and needs fully from us. I guess part of me, I guess it created some additional questions for me as I think about like, what do we need in order to be able to make decisions that best serve our community, given the resources that we are able to identify and have, right? And so I guess, so maybe just a couple of questions. Are we thinking consultant is strictly focused on kind of external engagement and bringing in like our community's perspectives? Are we thinking that they bring some sort of support for staff in terms of helping to identify cost savings or opportunities to increase revenue? I guess maybe that's my first question.
So the consultant could be a team of people, but ideally they were, they would be facilitating the task force, helping with the curriculum and have some financial expertise in helping us set up the conversation and be strategic about how to bring forward the recommendations from the task force.
Thank you. So sorry, I'm trying to like process and think in real time. So I guess for me, again, I will go back to, I think my biggest question, and also I think hearing what councilmember Sonmore had, said, I do think there are aspects of our work where I think we are elected to sit up here and make decisions about, you know, the resources that we have and how those are allocated and how best to support our community. And I think those are complex and hard decisions and recognize that those are, you know, there's a reason that we are here and we need to make those decisions sometimes. And so I guess with that, for me at least, I think it would be really helpful to better understand those, those service level, you know, needs and, and wants of our community when we think about how we are looking at our long-term financial stability to, to best prioritize that as we are making decisions. So I guess for me, like, from a community perspective, that might be the most helpful thing that I could have as a council member is really understanding like, what does our community, community need that we're providing and that, you know, they would be, it would be detrimental to not have, you know, what are things that maybe are nice, but you know, if we, we have to look at making changes that we could potentially shift. And then where's gaps that we're not even addressing right now that, that, you know, our needs or wants from a community perspective? Because I also think we're at this weird like point where we're also like, we're growing and we have this comprehensive planning process that we are engaging in. And like, we are not at a like point where I think we are just thinking about like, we're just going to keep doing the exact same things we're doing now. So I just, I don't know. For me, there's some complexity that I think as we think about community engagement in terms of the budget, I think on better understanding our community needs would be helpful for me. And I guess I will also just say, given, I think we've watched the school district navigate some of this recently. I think if we are going to ask our community for their feedback on what they want and need, I think we have to be careful that those are things that we can actually like support their, their, you know, their feedback on in a really meaningful way, right? So if there are areas where we don't have options, I, I don't think we should be asking those questions, right? And so I guess that would just be like, I think we need to be thoughtful. And I think to, to councilmember Sonmore's point, like, what are, what are the questions that our community, what we need from our community? And what are the like decisions that, that we need to make, you know, as members of this council? So I don't know if that's totally helpful and well thought out, but I guess for me that I think some continued conversation about what our goals are and how that impacts the scope of this body of work so that hopefully we can find a path forward that, that sets us up for success, both in terms of like the process as well as kind of identifying clear paths forward around financial stability. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, did you want to go first? Oh, let's have a break. Go ahead, councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's a great idea to want to examine the budget and where we're going in the future. I'm on the fence with it. I don't, first of all, I don't think $25,000 is much money for this. But a committee, I don't know if we need a committee, a consultant perhaps, I'd like to see us take the step, and I mentioned it before, what is the minimum our city must do to be a city? And what's that going to cost? And then go from there. Because there's things, yes, the citizens want this, and they want this, and they want But it costs money. And if we don't have the money, then they don't get it. So perhaps we need police. Those kind of things. We need a city manager. Those kind of things. So that's where I think what I kind of like to start there and just with us, what's it take to run the city? And go from there. And that's where I'd like to start. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Sonmore?
I'm glad Rick went first because I was going to echo what Erin was saying, and then Rick followed it up by the comments that he said more elegantly than I could, is that that's where we do need to start, is what are the basic services that a city has to provide? Because we don't want this committee all of a sudden to think, well, I'm going to have an art gallery downtown because the city's in charge of downtown, and I want a grocery store downtown because that's what the city should have. It's what are our basic services, exactly what you guys said, does a city have to provide? And that's where we start. It's just like a foundation of your budget at home. I have to have gas, I have to have food, I have to pay my insurance. It's the same thing with the city is, and that's why I guess it got me a little hot at the beginning, is because we have, we're supposed to provide those services, right? And everything else, we don't have to, right? So we have to make sure that we can pay for our basic services, and that's why we went out to the fire district, because we couldn't pay those services anymore, and we had to go out to our citizens. And I did get heat on when people got their house taxes on that price that they saw for fire on there. And if we want more services, how are we going to pay for those? I know, you know, we talked about buildings, right, coming up, but that's only going to last so long. If people want something else, then that's where we have to go out to the vote of the people like we did a couple of times for City Hall, and do they want to pay for that? And that's where it gets really hard, is people want to see prices reduced, and we know that we really can't reduce, we can't reduce our police. We could hire them out somewhere else to the sheriff's office, but we can't reduce our water, we can't reduce our waste, because we don't have any contract over that, and we know, well, we do have a contract, and we know what happened last time, and our prices went up, and they're going to continue to go up because that's what waste management said that they're going to do. And so it's really the parameter of what we can and can't do, and where those monies come from to pay for those basic services that we have to have. And that's why I don't want to fill anybody up thinking, you're going to come into this committee and we're going to get a grocery store downtown. It's looking at how do we pay for our basic services first and foremost? And then once we figure that out, it's finding out if you want, you know, a different park or you want to go into a regional park district and spend so much. And we already talked about card tabs going up to 40, 60, or however much, and then increasing property taxes. So that's where it gets really difficult, and that's why I was saying those decisions are going to come back to us anyhow on just the basic services. And that's where we need to be prepared to understand where those services are going up, because when we have to go out and raise our water prices again, it's not going to be fun. And we know that they're not going to be coming down.
Anyone else? So for tonight, this is just a review. We don't have to make a decision on anything tonight.
It is just a review. I think, again, I just want to note that the budget for this year was $25,000. We don't have a projected cost for next year if the council wants to move forward with this work. And we are just trying to make sure that we're on board with the scope before we do a request for proposals. So if there's any further comment from other councilmembers who haven't spoken, I would appreciate hearing from you. Otherwise, if most folks are feeling like we're on the right track, we can move forward with a request for proposals. But certainly don't want to go down that path if we're not on board.
Anyone else? Okay, well, we already approved this in the budget, so it already has been to us. And I know that we need to do, we need to have eyes on our budget and so forth, so.
So Mayor, what we can do is we can just prepare a draft RFP and then share that with council before we send it out into MRSC or wherever it's going to go.
All right. Everyone?
But can I offer a suggestion too? Can the council be educated on the basics? Because I, sometimes I just assume on what we have to have for the city, because we know, you know, looking at basic needs, we don't have any power over garbage, electricity, fire, or, yeah, fire. But what are our basic needs? And at the same time, we could be educating our council on what we are looking at for basic needs and do a Finance 101. I think that would be a good place to start as well. We're going to put this out to a committee, but we also need to empower our council on what we need to know as well, because I don't think we've had a, have you gone through a Finance 101? And where your tax dollars goes? Because that's, and I'm not being facetious about it, it's just, nobody likes to pay more than they have to, but we really need to look at what has to be paid. And it's not a big thing. We have some old presentations on it, but it's just something that would be nice to be brought up to the council.
Sure. And we noted councilmember Ryan's request, and we will make sure that that happens.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much. Next, you're doing the next one, too. Is the review, review the policy for proclamations.
Thanks again. We reviewed this last week, and a couple of folks weren't here, so we wanted to make sure that all the councilmembers had an opportunity to review the proclamation policy. Again, this was a policy intended just to provide clarity on the process for, on the purpose of proclamations and the process that we go through to request and implement a proclamation. And the council had asked that we bring this to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission for advice. They provided some, and we made some changes to particularly what proclamations should not be used for and what they should be used for, and a minor edit to the sixth bullet on the proclamation process, just to provide clarification. I'd be happy to answer any questions or listen to any comments you have on the proposal.
Does anyone have any comments or? Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Carolyn, I just wanted to say that I think this is a really well-crafted sort of proposal, and want to thank you and the DEIC for sort of threading a needle really well here. I think the policy, I think, meets our needs and, you know, leaves us the flexibility to do proclamations really well and sort of draws the line well for things that sort of, I don't think, you know, delve into requests that we might get otherwise. So just wanted to give you kudos for that. And I also think it's important that we are here approving this policy since it is topical at the moment. So, thank you.
Councilmember Sonmore?
I was just going to ask councilman Murray, at your meeting, were there any other comments that came up? Was there any discrepancies on, they were all, oh, good.
This isn't something that typically council votes for. We just wanted to make sure that the two councilmembers that weren't able to attend the previous discussion saw it. So just sharing it with you this evening.
It has a recommended motion on this bill. So we're going to vote on this tonight?
There was some confusion about it from the last meeting, so I did add an action, but...
Yep. We can have a motion, it won't hurt anything.
Okay, well, I can hear you.
We can have a council motion and vote, it won't hurt anything.
Tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I like how this clarifies what a proclamation is. It sets guidelines and regulates. Thank you.
Who would like to make the motion? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the policy for proclamations as presented.
Second.
It was a move and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, can I ask a question? Is the gentleman on the phone, is he our attorney for the...
Yes, he is.
He is. He is. He's representing Hillary.
I just wanted to make sure. I saw the phone was behind him and just assumed...
Good evening, everyone. My name's David Galazian, and I'm an attorney with Kenyon Deason, so just filling in for Hillary tonight. But apparently the link that I was given to get here just already had Hillary's name populated with it, so.
Thank you.
Good thing we clarified that.
I was just happy to hear you weren't the consultant on the budget.
All right. So, next page. Number 15, City Managers' Report.
Next page. Just a couple of things to mention this evening. So first, wanted to mention the next Terrace Talk on June 12th. That's going to be with our police department, and we'll be focusing on public safety, so I think that should be a great event and a chance to interact and talk with our law enforcement officers here in the city and find out what you can do and what they are doing to enhance public safety in the community. The board and commission recruitments are continuing, and we expect those to continue through the end of the month. We're going to redouble our efforts to reach out to folks, to see if we can gather more volunteers. Typically, we see a lot more volunteer, or a lot more applications for those board and commissions in the last week, maybe 10 days before the end of the filing period. So we should, we should see an enhanced response here coming up soon. I can't read my own writing, I'm sorry. Did want to mention that passports, we have about a year's worth of data collected now. Throughout the year, we have processed 1,342 passports and 882 photos, so that I think is above the expectation that we had when we started that program. We are also expanding passport agents, as we're training more of our team to be passport agents, so we can expand those numbers even further, and additional opportunities for folks in our community to come in and get their passports completed. And lastly, we are working on an interpretive sign project with Lake Ballinger and Hall Creek, and we're going to share that information with council and make sure you're all on board. We have some copy from the Corps of Engineers that we're using, and make sure council's on board with what those signs will look like. But I think it'll have, be a nice added feature to the park. And with that, that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been in the spirit of connections lately. One, that's super exciting to hear about the passports, and that it's already back and beyond where we thought it would be. And it dawned on me, what's it look like on the webpage? Because I figured that's a lot of people coming from all over the place, which then led me to say, oh, it'd be interesting to see if there's a way to leverage the passport page to direct people to other things that we want them to see that they're not going to pause on the website to see. Like, you know, that makes sense where it's like, they really came for the passport stuff, and at the end it's like, but did you know we have a park? You know, something that we actually wanted to visit.
Something like redirecting them or at least letting people know about the Terrace Summer Nights program.
Yeah, you know, just because, I mean, they must be hitting this page more than anything else. So it's like, why don't we use that as a, you know, secondary? I think of it as standing in line, I got my groceries, and then there's all the kind of magazines, there's candy, it's like, right there, because they're clearly using this page, so.
We can take a look at that, thanks.
Also, when the Linwood mayor was here for the State of the City address, she noticed that we had a passport sign out there, and she said, oh, I think I'm going to send everyone down here this time. She's been sending them elsewhere, because apparently they don't have one.
We'll take them.
Yes, we'll take them. Okay, I don't see anyone else with their hands up, so thank you very much. And then we'll move on to council liaison reports, and I'll start over with councilmember Sonmore.
Thank you. All I have to report is I attended the retreat getting over an illness, so I didn't make my boards, but I wanted to ask a question on the 30th, there's the Linwood Council President's Summit. What is that one about? That's about increasing threats to economic eviction? Because I was wondering, because Steve's been talking about that, so is that what that summit's on?
Yeah, that's, that's an opportunity for folks to convene and talk about what's been happening in several areas of the community, where private investment groups are buying manufactured home parks, and then either substantially raising the rent or redeveloping them, and how we can protect that affordable, one component of the affordable housing piece in all of our communities.
What is our code for manufactured homeowners?
Which...
I'm assuming, I don't know if that means economic eviction for manufactured home? Is that for, like, a mobile home?
Yes, so manufactured.
And then Royalwood was just sold, and so the space rents went up quite a bit.
Yep.
Didn't we protect ours a few...
We protected ours, but the space rents still went up. When they're, well, they're going up now.
And haven't they been talking about being able, oh, is that what you're going to talk about?
Oh, yeah, happy to. I raised this or connected the city manager with Linwood Council President George Hurst, who, you know, he and his wife are organizing this event to a decent degree and plan to have, you know, the Manufactured Housing Association, I believe the Attorney General's Office, as well as, you know, other, you know, interested parties and community members. You know, Linwood, I believe, has like 30 manufactured housing communities. And so it's meant to be a regional conversation, and, you know, it's something, as the mayor was saying, you know, these space rents with new ownership have been going up across the state, and there are specific entities that are buying parks and doing this. And there's a, you know, a tricky sort of federal financing element to this as well that's allowing for this behavior to impact folks. So it's on the calendar, because I forwarded the invitation to staff. So that's some context for us.
Helps. Okay. Let's see. We'll go on over there to councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. So on May 3... Thank you, Mayor. So, on May 3rd, I had our monthly Seashore Transportation Forum. I think highlights from that. They did a legislative session recap and talked about some of the budget challenges and the impact on transportation, and how a lot of things are on hold as we have an opportunity to vote on the Climate Commitment Act repeal initiative in the fall. And if that passes, there will be some very hard decisions, particularly around transportation. Well, not, we were focused on the transportation aspect of that. Until it's getting late. We talked about the initiative and the result, if they, I'm going to, hmm. All right. Seashore Transportation Forum. The Climate Commitment Act repeal initiative was one of the things we talked about in terms of a lot of the transportation work that's being done at a state level, kind of being on hold until after we see the results of that come the fall. The other thing I think probably notable from that conversation was that they voted on the, we finally voted on the letters of support process, which was a process that we kicked off here in our city when we had asked them to, to support, you know, one of the grants that we were putting in for. And so, now we have a very clear process, and the entire group has a very clear process, which is wonderful. So, when there are needs in the future, the, the group will be able to support that. On the 7th, we had our State of the City event. It was wonderful. Thank you to all of our staff for all of their hard work on that. It made me incredibly proud to live in Mount Lake Terrace, to serve on this council in Mount Lake Terrace, and just very excited about the work that we have done and, and are going to do. On our, on the 8th, I attended our second, one of the second sessions for our DEI training, which was, you know, I think a wonderful opportunity to continue to learn and grow there, as well as to connect with staff. On the 9th, I met with Leland Consulting about our Economic Development Strategic Plan. I had hoped to meet with them while they were here for the, the session that we held with our Chamber of Commerce and didn't have a chance to do it then. Also had my monthly meeting with the city manager and our work session that evening. And then last night, we had our monthly DEI Commission meeting. Highlights from that. City manager mentioned recruiting processes for boards and commissions. We have one position specifically called out on the DEI Commission now that we voted on here at our last meeting that is now dedicated for a high schooler who lives here in Mount Lake Terrace. So, we are excited about that change, and we have a very short period of time to, you know, encourage those, those folks that are eligible to get their applications in. So, would appreciate help getting the word out about that opportunity. We talked about June, June proclamations. We changed the June meeting day, so that's an important thing to note. So, our meeting was scheduled to fall on Juneteenth. So, we, we changed that, and we'll be meeting on Monday, June 24th for our June Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission meeting. We also talked about the upcoming Juneteenth celebration, which we are holding on June 15th. The Commission, as well as city staff, has been partnering with the library, as well as a host of other, you know, members of the community to put on a really exciting Juneteenth event on Saturday, the 15th, here in our Civic Plaza and the library. And they're going to have all sorts of exciting stuff. They're going to have a bunch of panel speakers who sound amazing, and they are planning some food trucks and activities and other, other fun stuff. And that is scheduled from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM on the 15th. So, I think that is it for my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. On the 7th, I too was at the State of the City. I thought it was fabulous. Great job, both of you. And of course, everybody that had anything to do with bringing it to fruition is absolutely fabulous. On the 9th was a little busy day. Had my one-on-one with our awesome city manager. Later that evening, I had the opportunity, I think we all did, I just acted on it, had the opportunity to participate in, witness, I actually would argue, all those are lawyer puns, swearing in, the swearing in and investiture of Judge Whitney Rivera, who is our newest judge to the Snohomish County Superior Court bench. And in the spirit of this being Asian American Pacific Islander Native Hawaiian Month, that is history. She is the first of Pacific Islander descent to serve on that bench here in Snohomish County, the Superior Court. So, congratulations to her. On the 9th, I was at the study session. On the 11th, I was not able to join, I don't think I actually heard anybody say it yet, but I think we had a pretty powerful session at the library honoring our folks who came to receive the proclamation. That's a whole lot of, that was a Chinese drill team, but it was a movie. I wasn't able to make it. I apologize for that, but I have a very good context. I don't make excuses. I have context, which is I was helping out with this year's Letter Carrier Food Drive. So, congratulations to all the food banks out there, and thank you to everybody who put food out, especially for those of you who probably did not receive a yellow bag, or did not receive a postcard letting you know it was happening, and that meant that you, through your own channels, learned about this and still participated. So, thank you for that. And I hope that our food bank here in Mount Lake Terrace fared well. It's all kind of regionally based. So, just putting that out there for them to think about. On the 14th, I had the honor to spend time with our friends at Sound Transit, talking about light rail. And I'll just leave that there for now, until they produce what they're going to produce from that. And then just today, to close it out, I had the opportunity to participate in a webinar that was looking at mental health issues affecting Asian communities. So, that wasn't just Asian American. It was Asian communities writ large. And that was, the guest speaker, or the expert, I should say, was Jolene Yang, which I believe, who I believe was part of the DEI. I feel like we had her speak through DEI back in the day when we were bringing people through. I didn't get a chance to look that up, but it was great to have her. She's out of California and does a lot of equity work. So, that's the end of my report.
Ken? Okay. Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. On May 7th, I attended the State of the City. And I think the city manager did a great job. And I'd hire him. To speak at anything for the city. Next, on the 14th, attended the left one Retirement Board. And that's the end of my report.
Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'll start on May 3rd, where I, and I think most everybody else, attended Ken's retirement party. And that was a teary affair, but we made it through. And I hope he's out, you know.
Relaxing?
Trailer on a riverbank somewhere. On May 7th, I, before attending the State of the City, I had my DEI training here with, or my second DEI training with staff, and really appreciated that opportunity, and really to sit and engage issues of, of culture and equity and inclusion with, with the rank and file, folks who keep this machine running, and, and really just appreciate that we're headed down this path, and, and that we're meeting the needs and expectations of our, our staff, as well as us and the community in that, in that endeavor. Also attended the State of the City. Thought it was terrific. And, and I'm really glad we're, we're doing this event. I thought the mayor and city manager struck really great note, or chord, or whatever, in sort of lifting up the, the city and all the, the plans that we foresee in our future. I also attended the, the work session that week, and, and now I'm here. So, that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so for my report, I'll start with, May 3rd, I also attended the Seashore Transportation Forum, but I was a little late to it. And, but, I was there to, for the voting of the letter, the, the letter of support. And on the 7th, we did the State of the City. And I was just really glad to see that people actually came and had a good time. And the food was delicious. Thank you, Bugus. On the 8th, I attended the Executive and Mayor's Meeting. And then I attended part two of our DEI training. And I am really proud that our city is doing this, because not every city does it. And some people don't even think that it's necessary. And just to let you know, if you ever tell me that you think that DEI is not necessary, I know that you need it more than everybody else. And then on the 11th, I, I attended the library for the screening of She Marches in Chinatown. And many of our DEI board members were there, commissioners were there. And I think they're doing a great job of getting things, getting things done in the city. And on the 14th, I'm going to say that I attended the photo shoot of Sound Transit. So, apparently a bunch of us people who live in Mount Lake Terrace, Shoreline, and Linwood are going to be in this photo shoot, and I don't know what they're going to use it for. But we had, I saw your, Councilmember Woodard's video, and I have a very similar video, only I have a train in my hand. And I don't know, anyways, it'll be, it'll be fun. And that's the end of my report. Okay, so then, next is new business. Does anyone have any new business? Councilmember Woodard?
I have three. I'll keep them really quick. One, I would, I, I believe it would be in the council's interest to, as soon as we can, get an update on how the partnership with, at the Senior Center is going. Just, we made some decisions there, and enough time has probably started to pass to get us in front of that conversation again, which I'm going to, I said I had three, but this was a twofer. Would love for us to revisit that question that we were, were being raised, no, I raised it, which is, are we in the senior business? And what does that mean? And what does that look like? I know in the context of talking budgets and red numbers and all that, I still think we've got to continue to grow. And I, and I would argue that through that conversation, there was a window there I didn't even know we had in the House. So, I want to see how far we can open it, if it needs to be opened at all. And again, that's just the concept of, are we in the senior business? And then us working through what that looks like. Doesn't have to be tomorrow. Just want to make sure we keep that in front of us. And then again, revisiting the partnership. Two, speaking of partners, I, we brought this group up earlier, the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group. Great example of Steve Woodard having to eat crow. If everyone remembers, I was not pleased with the ethnic makeup. I'll keep it simple. Racial, racial, ethnic makeup. And so, was questioning, how's this going to represent folks? Well, I will just say, from the eating the crow aspect of it, is that this group has been very forward-thinking and thinking about other perspectives. And from that, I've had the chance to get to know some of the other ones. So, that was a long way to just say, through those conversations, it dawned on me, weird segue, but it's all connected. We are going to put out a number of new summer events and advertising, which again, in that same concept of using the passport page as a secondary opportunity to talk about other opportunities. I would say, over here in this one, it's, we're going to have to advertise those events. And we've invested in the chamber. I'm requesting that we consider somehow getting the chamber's logo on all of the events that go out, or that we publicize. Now, if that means they pay some contribution financially, so be it, or if it's volunteers, but figure out something. But again, in the spirit of everything we've been talking about, growing our economic development portfolio, we got to support the folks who are already here, because they will be our bigger advocates in the long run as well, to get their peers to come up and build their shop right next to us. There were some other things that came out of that that have been coming out, but I just want to keep that low-hanging fruit one of just like, hey, we're already going to advertise new, 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 new. So, people don't know who's who on that. So, from a sponsorship perspective, our, our logo and our chamber logo on there, I think is in our interest. Just putting that out there. And then the last one, because I said I keep it quick, that's what you get for thinking you knew what my version of quick was. The last one is Snohomish Health Department. They have thousands of COVID-19 rapid tests in boxes of 24, individually wrapped. If you are interested in that, and I'm speaking to anyone who's here in the recording, as well as the city, as well as anyone here, all the hats that you wear, I would be honored to connect you to them. And I'll go so far as to say I'll even deliver them to you. It's similar to how the hand sanitizer was a couple summers ago, and then last summer, well, I'm switching that out now with these COVID-19 rapid tests. I suspect everybody on here has had a COVID scare. And if you didn't know, you had it because you were talking to me. And I was still out in the public. And I am doing everything I thought I was doing right. And then it turned out somebody that we didn't even see coming actually had something, but no one, as far as I know. And my family developed it, so we didn't pass it on, as far as we know. But again, in the spirit of that has not passed us, any touch point we can get to remind people of that, let's do it. And I'm taking that next step of saying, I will deliver tests to you to keep that in front of people, because I would hate to see it slip back in any way, shape, or form. So, that is now my, into my new businesses. I can, I'll bring them anywhere in Snohomish County. Yes. So, I, I can put easily 35 boxes in my car, which is about 800. Probably didn't do the math right on that. It was over 700, though. So, somewhere between 700 and 800. And I'll take multiple trips, so be it.
We can't hear you.
Good idea. So, yeah, the idea was bring some of the COVID-19 tests to the Senior Center. I think it's a wonderful idea. I will just make that happen. So, I'll make sure they know that that was your idea. Thank you for bringing it up. Well, it'll be our idea then, together. There we go. Fair enough.
I saw a hand come up on this side. Go ahead.
Just a quick side note. I heard council members speaking about school districts and budgets and things like that. And I wanted to just pass on some information that many people I talked to don't know, that when Washington State passed the McCleary Act, then the Washington State made all schools, elementary schools in the state of Washington had to have kindergarten all day. And it used to be half-day kindergarten. So, what that meant is each school, elementary school, had to add two to four classrooms per building. Unfortunately, they didn't have the room. So, Muckeltoe did, actually built a whole entire building just for 12 rooms. That's important to know. Also, the state then outlawed kindergarten grades one and two early release. They were released at 2:30 instead of 3:30, and that helped with transportation, and it helped with cutting down cost of, of, of a teacher supporting planned time in the classroom. So, that increased lots of money needed per elementary school. And, what else? And I really think it's great that, right here in Mount Lake Terrace, and in our Edmund School District, we passed the levy. And so, things will continue on that way. But that's the problem every school in the state of Washington has right now. So, it's important that you know that. So, if anybody asks you, why are school districts having problems? Well, could be some internal issues, but those are just two of the basic ones right there. And that was, you know, what, three, four years ago. But nobody knows it. Thank you.
10 years ago. Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't going to say anything. And I don't know how articulate I will say anything at this point of the night, but I guess just briefly, since we're talking about the school district and talking about impact, you know, I think one of the things we've talked about is, is ways that we, as a city, can give opportunities for young folks to, to do positive things. You know, and unfortunately, the, the budget You know, and unfortunately, the budget challenges of the school district are impacting music and arts for our kids. The Foundation for Edmond Schools does have a fundraiser going where they are trying to raise funds to support keeping some of those, at least for the next year, while we look at broader solutions at the state level. But I guess I wanted to put in a plug and share that for those who know, or for those who don't know, that, yeah, there is definitely budget challenges and budget impact. And, you know, as always, you know, folks, I think, in the community, looking to try to figure out solutions, which I always appreciate, so.
Okay, so I just have a couple of things. I just want to say that Ricky is doing such a good job that at a Seattle International Film Festival event, a resident came up to me, so excited to meet her mayor. And I didn't get her name, so sorry. And then at a real estate event that I was at just a couple of days ago, somebody walked up to me and says, you look so familiar. I said, well, I'm with, you know, this company and, because it's a real estate event. And she goes, no, 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 you just look really familiar. So finally, I just said, you mean like Mount Lake Terrace mayor? And she goes, that's it. I've seen your picture everywhere. So that is Ricky. So anyways, just wanted to mention that. I wanted to ask councilmember Woodard, I have a lot of COVID tests that are two years old. Are those really too old?
I will ask the Health Department that and get back to you. I don't know, that's good, yeah.
It says that it's 2020, well, it's two years old. What is, 2022?
I'm going to meet them tomorrow. I'll ask and get back to you.
Because if they are too old, then I will need new ones. But I have about 30 of them.
How about I just bring you a box? Yeah, I'll just bring you a box, no worries, done and done.
Okay, so I guess no one else has their hands coming up, so we're going to do this before 10 o'clock. We're adjourned.